Okay, all set.
All right, so September 7th, 2021, 7:32 PM, gonna call the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Members present Doug Roberts, Bob Shabbitt, John T. Hands, and myself. And that's it. Let's see, item C, applications to be received, none, no public hearings tonight. New business item A, EZ-21-15, one lot subdivision located at 32 Hancock Road.
So I don't see anybody here, unless this is it by phone, hold on. Hi there, can you hear us if you're here by phone?
Yes, I can.
Is that Russ?
This is Russ Heinz, yes.
Okay, perfect, you're right, right, right on time. I'm just gonna change the, his name in the recording. All right, so Russ, they, the commission actually just, just got to your item on the agenda, so I, I think it probably would be beneficial for you to just kind of give a quick overview to them about what you're seeking.
Okay, for the record, my name's Russell Heinz, I'm the land surveyor for, well, I'm the, the owner of Tarbell Heinz and Associates, I'm a registered land surveyor in the state of Connecticut. We're trying to, obviously you can see it's a 5.1 acre site on the north side of Hancock Road, approximately 1,500 feet, I said on my plan south, but it's really, I guess I'd say west of the intersection of Route 320, Ruby Road. This has been a parcel of land created shoot way back in the early 1900s. Joe Mahalia purchased it from, trying to think, Driscoll, I believe, back in the, probably the 90s, and it was subdivided in the early, was split off, there's a parcel of land even farther west of our parcel, it says on the plan there, the Gallions. That was cut off, so this is why we're back here for a resubdivision versus just a free cut. We did soil testing on the property, there's an existing dwelling there with an existing septic system, existing well, we meet all the regulations as far as the health department concerned. We did soil testing to prove that there was an area for repair for the existing dwelling, which met the health code, and we did test holes for obviously the new dwelling. There's a few things that, I don't know, if you've been looking at the report from the town engineer, well, we did not address open space, which I guess, I don't think there's any reason to give land for open space, because there's nothing around there that would be considered beneficial to the towns. But if we have to, I guess we'd be willing to do the fee in lieu of. That would be something that you'd have to vote on, I believe, as a commission. And other than that, I'll really ask, you can answer any questions, or I'll answer any questions you might have.
Uh, this is Bob Shabbitt, I would, I would suggest that the commission take a fee in lieu of open space that can add to the pool of money in the town's open space reserve fund.
Mike, Mike, our choices with open space in a situation like this, we could either charge the fee or waive it, correct?
It can provide land or a fee. You're, you're asking if you can waive it altogether?
Yes.
Let me verify that, hold on.
We did it recently.
Pull the language up.
I don't think that's beneficial to the far looking way of, the town's been trying to fund open space. I mean, it's a nominal fee. And since this isn't a free cut, I think the, it would be, it would not be overreaching to ask for that fee. In the other instance that we were talking about-
That was on Latham.
That was on Latham, but they had already set aside a substantial amount of open space with the previous divisions. I think that's what the conversation was about, this is not the case. We don't want slivers of land, but they are going to most likely get another building lot to utilize. And on the flip side of development is the, how do we fund open space and how do we, how are we able to purchase land for open space down the road?
It'd be interesting to see what it looks like on this lot, you have a map, you could put up, Mike?
Yeah. Is that too small?
I can sort of see it.
I can try to make it a little bit bigger.
So this second picture is with the proposed?
Yep, so existing is on the left, proposed is on the right.
Yep.
Okay, and where's the open space?
There, that was one of the comments from the town engineers, that there was no open space.
There's, there's no open space.
Guess the question is, where's it gonna go?
Pardon me?
I guess the question is, where is it gonna go on this drawing?
Well, I, I think open space in a small setting like this on five acres is not really open space. Open space needs to be contiguous, it needs to be in an area that can help for wildlife and, you know, open space, hiking trails, things like that, logging, whatever is deemed necessary on a particular parcel. In this instance, you've got two small lots, it's five acres. So instead of asking, trying to split off a little sliver or a corner or something like that, I think it's in our best interest, the town's best interest, to opt for the fee in lieu of open space.
So, how much money are we talking about, Mike?
It's, it's not, not to exceed 10% of the fair market value. So they would submit the appraisal to us, and we would use the appraisal to determine that the fee would be 10% of that. The only question that I would have for Russ is if this transfer of land will be to a, a family member of the current property owner?
My, my gut guess, or my gut feeling, or my, my initial guess is no. It's gonna be on the open market, so it's not gonna be able to go to a family member, unless they would save it for five, six years, because I think their children are way too young, so I'm gonna say no.
Okay, and so just the reason I ask that for the, everybody else is that there is an exemption to the open space requirement if, if for lots, for less than five lots, it goes to a family member and stays, stays there, I forget, for a period of time. It would be, yeah, so if that's not the case here, the commission could consider the, the land, although it seems like that wouldn't make sense, so the other option would just be that they provide the town with an appraisal and the open space fee would be 10% of that.
It seems like the best course of action here to me, what about you?
I agree, I agree.
That's why I asked the questions, though, I wanted to hear the details with the, what Mike provided and everything, so it seems to me like it's a reasonable case for it.
I, I just have a quick question, Mike, when the fee is collected, does that get put to an account that is only used then for the town to purchase open space?
That's correct.
Yeah, I, I'm in favor of doing that, in that case.
Any other questions on this one from the commission?
No, but this is Doug, and I concur as well.
Okay, John, you out there, what do you think?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, I think we're all in agreement here. Do we need a motion on this, Mike?
So, did I interrupt for a second?
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, there's, there was nine items on the town engineer's request, one of them was the open space. The other one was item six, which I, I mean, I don't, it just really doesn't make sense for a little five acre site. One is that we get tied into NAT 83, which is a horizontal base that they would like us to do, and then the other one is NAT 88 for the horizontal or the vertical elevations. And I did surveying on the parcels, basically starting from Ruby Road all the way down to this one, just using assumed data and tied everything in based on, starting with like, say, elevation 200, and designed septic systems for those three lots. And then I just used that same datum to design the septic system, which it shows on page two of our, my application. And they want me to tie into a different database, and I, not that I don't want to do it, it's just, I think it's, it's not something I just go out there and push a button, I gotta go run control and charge my client more money for it, and I don't think it's necessary for just this one lot. And I don't know if you can waive that, or if it's just something that you can approve without me doing that, but it really is not gonna change, and all my, all my datum is tied into the surrounding surveys that were done by others, so I think I'm in compliance, but and obviously if I was doing a 20 lot subdivision or something like that, yes, of course, we would do that, because it's something that would be beneficial to the town. But for this one little lot, I don't see it being necessary.
Um, I think that, that regulation is, is quite old, and it, and providing, providing the data to our GIS folks in the, with the horizontal datum that they're referencing in the Connecticut State Plane System, that's not how they're taking it now, so I think that we can work with you on just making sure we get the right file format so that we can include it. They're not gonna, they're not gonna want that type of file anyways, but there are, yeah, so, so just to quickly go through for everybody, and I know you've got it, but so there were nine comments, as you mentioned, one was the open space, there was a recommendation related to the well, bearing distance to be shown on both lot line, sedimentation erosion control measures to be shown for lot 38, 16. They wanted a driveway detail, we talked about the datum, and then they wanted signatures and soil boundaries. So there's a couple of things that need to be tweaked on the plans, but our subdivision regs require that the commission, you have to know what the open space fee is before we can do anything with it. So before you can, you can't issue an approval contingent on the open space fee without having seen what the appraisal comes in at. The regulations require that that be considered as part of the meeting, so it's a long way of saying we can't do anything with it tonight. So I think the best course of action would be for the plans to be updated and for the appraisal to be provided so that we can wrap this up at a subsequent meeting.
Okay, and I think your next meeting is the 27th, does that sound right?
I think it's the 21st.
21st, whatever, I'm, I'm gonna say I'm gonna be hard pressed to get an appraisal by then, but I certainly can have it for your, probably the October meeting.
So- I was just gonna say, we can leave it on the agenda for the 21st, and if we don't have that, then we can push it to October, but at least it'll be there. So if everything works, you don't have to wait till October unnecessarily, I mean, if the commission is good with that.
That sounds good to me, Mike.
It works for me.
Works for me.
And for, and for the record, I had no problems with any of the other question, or the things that the town engineer wanted to do, in fact, I've done it on my planes, I was expecting to see you guys in person tonight, but it's not happening, so I will make sure we get the appraisal done, and, hey, we'll go from there, next meeting.
Okay, and yeah, Russ, if you get them done and get everything ahead of time, if you send it to me, we can do a review ahead of time of the meeting, make sure everything's squared away so we can, I can get a motion written and we can have it wrapped up for the meeting.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Russ. All right, item B, discussion adult use cannabis.
So, we talked about this at a couple of the meetings related to the legislative changes that happened through, through the session that ended in June and the beginning of July. And so, obviously, as we all know, one of the things that happened was that adult use cannabis became allowable. The law, which went into effect on July 1st, even though the state does not have permitting requirements, even though the state does not know how they'll license it and what all that is going to look like, the law, the law says that as July 1, it's allowed locally, which means if someone came to town and wanted to do a retail sale operation, and they went into a location, let's say, Phelps, that was existing retail, they would not need to come before the commission for approvals, because the law says absent zoning regulations, the town has to treat it like a similar use. So we would treat a retail sales as any other retail operation, we would treat a cultivator as we would another manufacturing operation and so on. So, even though it's not likely, because the state doesn't have that process yet, and we are going to be capped at the number of permits we will have in each town based on population, you know, the commission still has to kind of decide how they want to handle, and I'll stop sharing my screen, how they want to handle the regulation of it, we can do nothing, and we would have to treat it like similar use. We can move right into the development of regulations, or we can consider the develop, the establishment of a temporary moratorium, which would put a pause on having to receive any of these applications if we thought one might come in while we develop regulations, if you thought that the development of those regs would take some time. So I wanted to get some feedback from you guys on what that, your thoughts are.
Are there any regulations that you have access to that other towns have done that would be useful for us to look at, just to, if we wanted to consider anything like that?
Yeah, I, I could pull some, a lot of towns are sort of, well, there's, we, we are in the Crog region, and of the 30 something towns that are in Crog region, I think 20 of them are currently considering moratoriums, because they, they just don't know what they don't know, and they don't want to be in a position of having to consider a, one of these uses in a location they hadn't thought of, because they, they rushed regs. I could pull some examples, I think a lot of towns are trying to consider it to be something similar to alcohol. I don't know that I necessarily agree with that approach, only because it might be fine to have a couple of restaurants that serve alcohol in the same building, but it might not be fine to have a couple of cannabis retailers or cannabis establishment, you know, I, I think there are differences. But if you wanted to write regs, I could pull some examples.
Is there any, is there anything you're aware of in the other towns' regulations that would keep it so far from a school or something like that?
Um, there are towns that are working on that, but I am unaware of any towns which have passed regulations yet, because you know, it's really, we're only about a month into the towns really understanding the meat of the law, and we would have to treat a moratorium just like a reg where we'd have to send it to Crog and give them 35 days, so nobody's really had that, but I can pull a few examples if, if you want, for the next meeting or for early October.
What's the commission think?
I think it would be good to have a reference, and, and Mike, I read some articles too, that the bigger towns are also basically going the moratorium route, so I guess if you, if you could find that out as a reference too, that, that may be beneficial.
So I have, in a, a few of my towns, we are doing moratoriums, I did one for Ashford, considering one in East Windsor, and, you know, the, the upside to the moratorium is it gives us time, and we don't have to consider any applications during that time. The downside is, for some folks, they feel like the optics of having a moratorium means that we don't necessarily plan to look favorably on these uses. So they both track the same amount of time, we both have to refer them to Crog and provide 30 days notice. The difference is, the moratorium, we can write it for four months, for example, and, and we can hit pause on any of those uses. The state hasn't developed any of their guidance yet, right, so we don't know when that will happen and what that will say. So I think a lot of towns are going the moratorium route so that they can kind of see how things are going and see what happens with the state if they bring out guidance. So I really just need from you guys to tell me, do you want me to bring you a draft moratorium language or draft regulations for review?
So are we talk, are we talking, Mike, about just retail, or are we talking about the possibility of a grow operation as well?
There are eight license types, so you have a cultivator, micro cultivator, retailer, packager, transporter, delivery. So statute caps the number of retail and micro cultivator establishments that we can have from now till 2024 at one each. So we can only, we can only have one retailer, even if we got the application tomorrow, you can only allow one. So, you know, the potential universe for that is not so expansive, because the law very clearly says towns regulate and cannot issue more than one per 25,000 residents.
Well, I, I guess my point is, is that the difference between a retail operation and a grow operation, I mean, a grow operation usually, I mean, because of the laws, at least in other states, they, with the security requirements, they're basically, they build large butler buildings. And, I mean, if, to totally outfit a grow operation, the town, I'm sure, would see an awful lot of revenue every year, just because of all the equipment that's necessary to outfit that building. Uh, so, and again, because it's controlled, the, the states want it controlled, so that there's no breaking and entering and things like that. I, I think we might want to look a little differently on a grow operation as opposed to a retail operation. I think the grow operation would be certainly a good business opportunity for the town to take advantage of from just, just basic taxes.
So, so Mike, with the changes, none of this would go to public hearing or anything, the townspeople wouldn't get a chance to weigh in on what they think?
Oh, no, 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 this would, we, we absolutely would have the regular standard public hearing, so this would all go, this, just like any other text amendment. But it's just a matter of, you know, what do you want to do, do you think that there's a risk in, in not doing the moratorium?
I don't think there's any harm in doing the moratorium, what, what would you do it for, four months? Let, let everything shake out and see what the state's thinking.
Now give us some breathing space.
Absolutely. Yeah, that shouldn't reflect negatively or positively on us, it's simply looking for a little time.
Clearly, there's a lot to do here to develop the regs, I would, I would be in favor of a moratorium.
Okay, so what I'll do is, I will, I will present to you, I'll have language for the moratorium for the next meeting for the commission to review, and then if you feel that it's appropriate, I'll refer to Crog and we'll have basically the public hearing to adopt it, which will be in October. And then we can take it from there, just backing up to Bob's point, there are specific provisions within the law which, which indicate for things like the retail operation, a percentage of the total gross revenue that's generated from that store goes to the town. It doesn't go into the general fund, I don't believe. So you're not talking a million dollars a year, because based on what they've seen en masse, the amount of money that those stores generate and what they sell and their volume, you know, could it be a hundred thousand dollars? Yes, I think there's specific limitations on it, but part of that does remain with the town, beyond, you know, cultivator, you know, we would tax the equipment, we would tax all those things, just like any other personal property, but this is related to the revenue, because, because the cannabis is taxed, like alcohol or cigarettes.
Well, one, one interesting thing, the public hearing for the, for the moratorium, at least we'll get a good, maybe we can get a good gauge on how people are feeling here in town too. About it, certainly attitudes have evolved a lot around these sort of things in recent years, so be interesting to see what people think.
Yeah, I think with Yukon in our backyard, we could make a lot of money every year.
Hey Mike, in Massachusetts, they also have a townwide referendum, see if retail establishments would be allowed. Is there anything in the Connecticut law along those lines?
So, the law basically says, if we do nothing, then we have to treat it like it would come through us, through, through planning and zoning as a like use. If the town, the town can choose to regulate or reasonably prohibit through zoning regulation, it can also choose to create an ordinance. So, the Board of Selectmen could decide that they're gonna pass an ordinance, even after you've passed a reg to prohibit it or to require licensing, they could pass a regular, an ordinance which prohibits it to, to be consumed or smoked or possessed on, in town parks. So there are, there's more flexibility and, and the ordinance process, the Board of Selectmen can be far greater reaching beyond just the use. So one of the things we would do during the- Um, so one of the things we would do during the moratorium is. Process is figure out what the Board of Selectmen is planning to make sure that they're not trying to do something that's completely. Contradictory to what you guys want to do. So yes, the law does include a process by which the, the legislative body can send this to a referendum for a. A vote on how to deal with it if they choose, but they don't have to.
Mike, has the Board of Selectmen or the Economic Commission, um, have they voiced a, an opinion on this?
No, not, not to my knowledge, not as of yet. Um, I think that. We will probably need to take their temperature when we're going through the process while we have the moratorium in place. I know that the one thing that comes up pretty consistently is that. Um, you can do a fairly good job, but not a hundred percent job at getting rid of the smell if you have an internal cultivation. Operation inside of a, a, a building, but, but um it's not uncommon for these growth facilities to just have an open field. And so when the plants bloom, they create a very strong smell and having that be in close proximity to residential neighborhoods can create a lot of issues. So that's something that, that we kind of need to figure out from an economic development standpoint, but also from a use standpoint. We don't want this thing to be nearby to people that have to smell pot from their backyard.
Yeah, the, the, the thing that I would mention about growing outside, that's something the farmers are doing. Uh, these grow operations are. A lot of their uh plants are for the THC, the hallucinogen. And my understanding is that those have to be, those cannot be grown outdoors. Uh, if there's a certain percentage of THC in the plants. So the plants that are being raised by the farmers and if you drive up ninety one. Towards the fall, you catch a whiff as you go and past one vet and small valley where they have probably twenty acres of uh. Uh hemp raised, uh, being raised, but it's not for the THC, it's for uh medicinal for swelling. And such that they use for ointments and, and such. Uh, so I think most of your uh quote unquote medical uh marijuana. And recreational marijuana because of the content of the uh THC. Has to be raised in a building, so you're not going to have. This odor whiffing across and that's a fact because of the high humidity that those plants can't tolerate when they're flowering. They mildew and that's, that's not where you want to go with a flowering plant. So I, I'm, I was, I was a horticulturist for forty two years. Uh, I can, I can speak about some of these things. Uh, so again, uh, a moratorium may be the way to go right now, I think. Uh, thinking back uh in South Wellington. When the states first started allowing uh prescription uh uh weed. Uh, they, someone had applied for. Uh, to start a business in the mills and all they were going to do was take, bring samples in and test it for the purity. And it, it ruffled quite a few feathers and quite a bit of damper fell to the floor from the folks in town. So that's all I want to say.
Well, I guess we'll find out how people feel, Bob.
Yeah, oh yeah, well, and that's what it's about. That's what it's about.
All right, Mike, any more required on this one? You're going to pursue uh language for a moratorium?
Yep, so I will draft language for proposed moratorium. So it's treated just like a text amendment, so we'll insert it into the regs, it'll get referred out, have a public hearing, so, so I'll bring that ready to go for the. Next meeting in September for you guys to review.
All right, very good. All right, no unfinished business tonight. Approval of minutes for July sixth, twenty twenty one.
Yeah, I, I didn't, uh, I didn't get them done with Ashley being gone. I've been running around crazy with some of the other stuff we have going on.
Put them on next agenda.
Yep.
Maybe we'll put these two, put them both on. Big H correspondence.
Um, I do not have any correspondence.
Okay, I, public comment, the commission will hear brief comments at this time from anyone wishing to speak. No business can be conducted here or can any comments be made about any items on the agenda? We have anyone from the public out there?
Looks like one.
I saw Ralph earlier, I thought I saw. Again, anyone have anything to say from the public? All right, we'll take that as a, as a no. Staff reporter discussion.
So um, just before we do the loves update, the one other thing that I wanted to mention on here was. We talked about the Affordable Housing Plan. Um, so. Just to get that ball rolling, um, so that we can get started, as the town was the recipient of a grant. What I figured I would do, since we talked about having this commission develop it. The statute is silent and basically doesn't say whether it should be the Board of Selectmen or Planning and Zoning. So what I think we um should do is. Send a memo to the Board of Selectmen from P and Z to just say that we're going to be doing it and that we're going to be, you know, taking on the process as required by statute. And um, just sort of put, put it across their agenda officially, but I, I didn't know if you guys had any thoughts for. What type of a process you wanted it to be? This is a small plan, it's not like a P O C D and the, the, the. The purpose of the plan is defined, it's to, it's to come up with a, to identify a process to, to develop more affordable housing units in town. I mean, that is what the plan is for. Um, it's a short duration plan, it's for five years. Um, and so there are a lot of towns which have not, not going with such um a heavy. Sort of. Heavy drafting, we're reviewing things line by line, um, and having extensive of public outreach and. Are taking a bit of more of a data-driven approach where we're doing review of the regulations, review of P O C D. Doing some G I S analysis of parcels which may fit into some of those categories, reviewing, you know, demographic data and really coming up with a more. Like I said, data-driven approach to the plan. Since it's something that's such a short duration and I wanted to get some feedback from you as to what you thought, you know, how you wanted this to go. Um, you want me to be kind of working on that and we'll come to various points. Um, to develop the outline of the plan, the public survey, um, you know, go through the major checkpoints or do you want to set an item where we basically write this? As a commission, uh, you know, twice a month on Tuesdays. What do you, what do you feel?
Personally, I like Plan A better.
Yeah, me too.
I, I like the low-key approach to this over the course of time.
Okay, um, so what I think would be uh the next step for you guys would be, we would. I would write up a proposed approach, basically an outline, this is what the process will involve, this is what we're going to do, this is the. This is the components of the plan, you know, well, we want to have a, a demographic analysis, we want to have regulatory analysis of, and then I present that to you. And um, if you like the overall approach, then I'll start on the first step and we'll go off and do the first step and we'll come back to you with that. And we'll go through and combine, compile piece by piece the various components. So that, you know, we're off in, in writing and you guys can see those major categories as we check those boxes.
That seems reasonable.
Yeah, I liked that.
It sounds good. Yeah, it sounds good to me.
Okay.
Is that something, Mike, that after we had a finished product, that the land use attorney would weigh in on or anything?
We can certainly send it to him. Um, it's not, it's an advisory document, so it's not binding.
Uh, that was my concern, you just answered it.
So you're not, you're not going to be in a position down the road where you, someone's going to say, well, you identified here, you said this, this and this, or you have to approve this. Or you have to deny that. It's uh, it's just like the P O C D, it's meant to, to, to guide.
Okay.
All right, so I will do that. Um, so as far as loves, um, just to give you an update, obviously they're, they're in progress. So all the letters of credit have been provided, um, and, and all the final plans and everything's there. Their engineer Fuss is on site every day as required. Our um engineers have also been. Doing inspections and, and I think I mentioned, I've sort of told them that I want them to have the flexibility and the latitude based on. Weather, based on the, the speed of construction to decide when they need to be on site. So they're not asking me. Mike, I want to go tomorrow, can I go? I, they go when they need to be there and that may be twice a day or maybe. Once a week, it really depends on how things are moving. So we receive um weekly report, we receive them weekly, but they're done daily from Fuss. Um, inspection reports and then we also get those inspection reports from our engineer to go on site. So basically, they're, they're looking at the construction sequencing, erosion and sedimentation controls, making sure that there's planned compliance and identifying anything that needs to be adjusted. Um, if there needs to be additional silk fencing or, or something along those lines.
I was just holding up with all the rain.
So um. The, I'm trying to think of which day because we've had so many different big storms, but um, there was originally some. Um, questions re- related to, you know, a potential issue that was going on and I, and I had them C H A go out and look. And it turned out that there, there really wasn't an issue. And there have, they've been doing periodic inspections, been looking at stuff. The um issue that I was discussing today with, with one of the folks from Fuss was actually. Not related to a silk fence failure, but the fact that there's a spot in the slope naturally where the, where the water's just bleeding out. And so it's because it's coming right out of the ground, it's not surface water, it's getting underneath the silk fence. Um, so they are. Working out, uh, there's some sediment control base in their sediment control. Temporary sediment control measures which need to be installed, um, which should rectify that. So they've doubled up the, the hay bales. They've fixed the silk fence, they've, they've double staked. Um, and so the way the format, the form, the reports are presented to me is. They'll go and do an inspection on a Tuesday and they'll say, okay, yep, it's bleeding out here. So that silk fence is not in compliance, so they'll say compliance, silk fence, no. And then the next day when they do the inspections, they'll send me their photo, which shows that it's been rectified and you'll see compliant silk fence, yes. So we're, we're able to track the various issues that they're identifying and whether, and then the fact that they're being rectified. So um, all in all, we, we haven't had any catastrophic problems, haven't been any major issues, any silk fence blown and dirt flying everywhere. There have been, you know, spent some runoff obviously, but nothing that has been um. Unanticipated.
Okay, many complaints from the public.
We've had a couple, um, which was basically, you know, there was one which is, oh, the road is, there's dirt all over the road, everything's ruined, you know. How could the town have approved this? You know, who's in the back pockets of the developer and one of those. But it was related to the delivery of the machinery and so the tracking pad wasn't in because the machinery wasn't there. So there was some minor tracking, it wasn't catastrophic, there was no major issues, it was rectified, but the machinery wasn't there, so they, they didn't have the, the E N S controls in. So since that, um, we haven't, I have not received anything.
Okay. Any other things to update on, Mike? What about auto uh, auto boutique or whatever it's called?
Oh, um, so we, we sent the notice of violation, we had to resend it because the property was sold and so we had to issue it to the new owner. That was um not accepted, we sent a cease and desist, um, which was also not accepted, so um. Last week, uh, late, the week before or early last week, um, we had the cease and desist served by Marshall. Um, so that was, that was served and if there, I mean, as of this morning, there was no progress.
It's worse than ever.
Yeah, so at this point, it's fair to assume he knows. And has just taken the approach of, I guess I'm, I'm not going to um make an attempt, I'm not sure, but um. So the next step will be, I think I gave him a ten or fifteen day compliance for the, the notice which was delivered by a marshal, so the next step, it'll go to the attorney.
Okay. All right, anybody else have anything before we adjourn?
I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay, you good Doug?
Yeah, I just uh have a uh, I was in Hawaii for the last two and a half weeks and um, yeah. Each of the islands have all these uh wild chickens and roosters going all over the place.
Oh no.
Yeah.
New Guinea jungle fall.
And no, and no one complains about the uh rooster crowing in the mornings during the day or at night. It's just kind of, kind of funny.
I was walking the other day and we have roosters in town, believe it or not, they're.
Yeah.
I hear them all the time.
Yep. So, so we're that much closer to Hawaii by having roosters crowing, yep. That's it for me.
All right.
The only other thing I wanted to just mention to everybody is um, we're going to be having the uh. Hearings coming up for the text amendments that was proposed by E D C and some of the other modifications. Related to some of the legislative stuff, so those have been referred to Crog, we should have the comments back. And um, so that'll be coming up, assuming everything works out at the next meeting, if not early October, but um, just so you know, we will have some of those hearings.
All right, sounds good. All right, it is eight nineteen P M, meeting adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.
Night.
Good night. Bye bye.